This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, in the last session, we were talking about baseline configuration in which we defined two configurations. One was your company code, company and then assignment of company code to company. Now let us try to create the other configurations whatever are pending or whatever are in sequence. I'll go up to the configuration list. Make a note, I'm not writing here the steps again, I'm only writing what we did on this particular date. Here we did company creation, company code creation and then the assignment. Next one, what I'll do here is, next point is your chart of account. Next point is chart of account. Here what we have to do apart from this one, we will be updating what we are actually creating. We will be creating what we have actually created if I go to O X fifteen. If I'm not wrong, I think we created O P I N as our company code. This is also O P I N and this will be like O P I N to O P I N. So that when you keep adding further settings, we keep forgetting previous setting, this is quite common for everybody. If you add first three settings, these three settings will be there in your mind. When you keep adding the further settings, the initial settings will keep on removing from your mind. Because we don't remember everything, there is a limit for everything. Once you reach maybe some five entries, ten entries, you will start forgetting the initial entries. It is quite common for everybody, don't think you are not able to remember. Don't think you are not able to practice properly, this is common for everybody. If you are forgetting only your understanding. The checklist, the checklist which will make you feel that yes, you are understanding properly, you are going in a right way. Is to verify by way of forgetting things, you have to forget things, if you are forgetting things, you are on track. If you are not able to understand straight away, if you are getting confused, you are on track. If you are understanding whatever I am talking straightforward, you are able to remember everything, something is wrong. When I say something is wrong, you are going to forget at a stage, you are going to forget at a stage where it is going to affect. Okay, when I say you are going to forget at a stage where that is going to affect meaning. You will remember all these days whenever you practice, everything is on your fingertip but tomorrow. When you are sitting in front of your interviewer, when somebody is asking a question, at that moment you will forget. Tomorrow you are in a project, you have to speak out about something, some process you need to explain, that time you will forget. But after that discussion, after the interview, you will remember everything. For that question, you will have nice answer, everything is you know nicely dancing in your mind, it is about to come, you are. You are ready to explain but nobody is ready to listen. But when you had a person who is asking you the question, who wants to listen to your answer, at that moment you don't get it. Meaning initially you have to get the confusion, initially you have to forget the things, initially you have to make mistakes. Initially you have to get errors, only then you rectify everything, then you will become comfortable, you will be familiar with the system. This is how you have to learn. Initially if everything is smooth, easy, you are finding it very interesting and all, later on everything will be complicated. Later on everything will be complicated, so let us make it complicated at the beginning itself. Going forward, things will be simplified, meaning you don't have to worry about anything. Even if I talk, you will be able to understand what I am talking, why I am talking because in the upcoming sessions. We will be discussing more practicing less because that is what is required. Tomorrow when you need to talk to somebody, you need to have something in your mind to explain. Or you need to have some understanding in your mind with which whatever you are hearing from the other person, you can connect it to it. Because nothing, no conversation of S A P Fico with the other person is related to config. So when you know that your conversation is not going to be with respect to configuration, don't pay much attention on config. If you are paying attention on the requirement, understanding of the requirement, how this is going to work in S A P. Automatically these things will teach you configuration. Automatically these things will teach you configuration because you have some requirement in your mind. You wanted to practice something, you want to do something, you are getting error. Obviously you know that you know what you are planning to do, you know what is your requirement. If you are trying to do it in S A P, you are unable to get it. At that moment, you will not sleep, even if you try to sleep in dream also you will get S A P only. You will say that if I try like this, will it come, you will get up, you will open the laptop. Otherwise randomly if you are opening the system trying to do it, you will feel that okay, this is not working, let me do it tomorrow. That tomorrow will never come. So make sure you practice in such a way, your error will make you sit for longer time. Your issue, your confusion will not allow you to sleep, those things will allow you to you know, let me know what it is. Either you ask me or you discuss internally in the group or you Google it or whatsoever. But make sure any doubt, any confusion that you are getting will be rectified. These things are very, very important because later on your knowledge, your understanding is based on. How you are responding to the other person, how you are talking to the other person with respect to S A P Fico excluding the configuration. With respect to S A P Fico excluding the configuration, don't talk about configuration to anybody because nobody is going to ask you config. In case if somebody is asking you configuration, it is very simple. It is very simple because everybody knows if you try to put configuration for X Y Z topic, you get step by step transaction code list. By hearting that a transaction code list is very easy. But if somebody is asking you what is this, what is this, why you do this, why you do that, if you do this, what is the impact? That is where big, big question marks will come, this question mark is what you have to target at the beginning only. When you target this question mark, the answers will come to you automatically. Okay, so now let us try to do the remaining configuration. Here the next configuration is your chart of account. Basically whenever you talk about chart of account, you are talking about list of G L account. When you say list of G L account, in any organization, in any organization, any business transaction that you perform. Any business transaction that you perform, now you are representing Fico consultant. As a Fico consultant, you are going to support accounting department or you are going to support finance department. Or accounting users or finance user, any transaction related to accounting. Or any transaction related to finance will always have impact monetarily. When I say will always have the impact monetarily, meaning there is a financial impact, there is a money involvement there. Either you are receiving the money or you are giving the money. Money inward or money outward will be there, for that inward, for that outward, they have to record it. They have to record it, that is where they are talking about accounting, we are accounting as a debit, you are accounting as a credit. Meaning I am accounting as a positive number, I am accounting as a negative number. Meaning I am doing this transaction, this will be a plus to my balance. I am doing this accounting, this will be a minus to my balance. Meaning either you will increase it or you will decrease it. This increase, decrease are represented by way of debit, credit in accounting. Same thing is followed even in your S A P, any monetary transaction that you are doing, that is where your accounting is involved. Wherever accounting is involved, as a Fico consultant, you are involved. When there is no accounting, there is no debit, there is no credit, there is no work for you. As a Fico consultant, if there is no debit, if there is no credit, there is no work for us. So make sure as a Fico consultant, you are debit, credit basically. And to record any debit, credit accounting entry, you need G L account. For example, if you take any example, sales, purchase, everything, everything is a G L account, you are writing account there. Sales account A by C, we will write every time whenever you write your journal entries, we are all habituated to write A by C. Sales account, purchase account, cash account, bank account, X account, Y account, Z account, you will be writing different, different account. Every account we are representing by A by C account, all the A by C account, all the A by C account, whatever you are representing. Are all part of your chart of account, are all part of your chart of account. Meaning when you know your business process, when you know the business process, you know what kind of transactions you are going to perform. For example, in my business process, I will do sales, I will do purchases, I have expenses like rent, electricity bill or X, Y, Z and all. Now I know that these are all the transactions which I am going to do on a daily basis. Which I am going to use it on a monthly basis for my reporting purpose, on my quarterly reporting purpose, on my annual reporting purpose. According to the requirement, you know what kind of entries you are going to pass, all these entries, all these entries will involve either debit or credit. All these entries will involve either debit or credit, now all this debit entries or all this credit entries are your G L accounts. All these debit entries, credit entries are your G L account, all these G L accounts you are going to consolidate at one place. All these G L accounts you are going to put it under one place, that place is nothing but your chart of account. This is nothing but a chart. In this chart, you are going to have lot of accounts, now these accounts you have to create in a systematic way. Why you need to create your G L accounts in a systematic way? At the end of any month, you are going to prepare reports. At the end of any month, you are going to prepare reports, when you are preparing reports at the end of any month. We are basically talking about trial balance, P N L balance sheet. You are going to prepare trial balance, P N L balance sheet, we are all aware, just like that you cannot prepare a trial balance. Just like that you cannot prepare a P N L, just like that you cannot prepare a balance sheet. For T B there is a format, for P N L there is a format, for balance sheet there is a format. What is this format, for example, if I am talking about trial balance. If I am talking about trial balance, I have something called a debit, I have something called a credit in my T B. In my T B, I will have debit and credit. Now we need to slowly understand what comes in trial balance debit, I would say. Expense will come and asset will come on the debit side of my T B. Similarly, when I talk about credit side, what comes in my T B credit side, I am going to get my incomes. And I am going to get my. Liability, I would say that expense and asset is on the T B debit side, income and liability. Sorry, expense and asset on the T B debit side, income and liability on my T B credit side. Now how I am going to know that what is my expense, what is my asset? And how I am going to know that what is my income and what is my liability? Now I know accounting, I am able to identify, yes, this is income, this is expense by looking at the name. But how S A P will understand that this is asset, this is liability, this is income, this is expense, it is supposed to be taken on the debit side. This is supposed to be taken on the credit side because for S A P, everything is account. For S A P, everything is account but you want S A P to do your accounting automatically. For S A P, everything is accounting but you want S A P to do everything automatically, for system to do things automatically. For system to do things automatically, we need to make sure there is a logic. We need to make sure there is a logic, according to this logic, the system will identify that this is asset, this is liability, this is expense, this is income. And within this, there is a segregation called P N L account, balance sheet account. How these are all managed, how system is going to identify, this identification, this logic, everything you are going to maintain under the chart of account. When we say we are going to maintain all these activities under the chart of account. It is a list of G L account which contains detailed breakup, detailed definition, detailed analysis of each account. Meaning here, when you create a chart of account, you are not only creating a new entry, you are deciding how your total accounting is performed. You are maintaining how your total accounting is performed in which you are going to talk about T B. You are also going to talk about your P N L, you are also going to talk about your balance sheet. Without knowing the T B P N L balance sheet, you are not supposed to create chart of account. Why you are not supposed to create chart of account because while creating the chart of account, if you are thinking about T B P N L balance sheet. You will be creating chart of account in a way which is going to help your T B P N L balance sheet extraction from S A P. Otherwise, we will just like that create a T, just like that create a chart of account, one account group and all. This may be helpful, this may be supportive to your business requirement related to financial reporting. Or this may not be supportive for the business requirement related to financial reporting. Reason, while defining the chart of account, you are not considering relating to your reports. Meaning there are connections, your chart of account has got a direct connection with your P N L balance. Your chart of account has got a direct connection with your P N L balance sheet. Now if you do not know, if you do not understand that your P N L balance sheet is directly extracted from. Trial, your chart of account, it is very difficult for you to understand why you are creating chart of account, what points we need to remember. Why we need to remember the points, for example, if I show you P N L balance sheet from S A P. Normally this is where you are going to generate your financial statement. If you look at the screen, this is your financial statement, financial statement is nothing but P N L balance sheet. While generating the P N L balance sheet, you can see it is asking you to select a G L account. We are understanding the G L account is part of chart of account, it is clearly stating for which a chart of account you want P N L balance sheet. If you do not understand that your chart of account is directly connected to P N L balance sheet, later on at the end of any month. At the end of any month, if you would like to look at P N L balance sheet, it is not practically possible because. While defining the chart of account, this is not at all there in your mind. Because while defining the chart of account, this point related to P N L balance sheet is not part of our mind. Make sure these things you will keep in your mind, these things you will keep in your mind and while defining the chart of account. You have to keep or you have to remember P N L balance sheet. Only then practically you will understand why you are creating G L account, under which account group you are creating it. Why we are creating like this, who will give you the data, how you are going to create it, you will be able to understand. Otherwise, whatever you create, if this is not going to be helpful in your reporting. Chart of account, whatever you are creating a number of times in your practice, is not going to be helpful. And tomorrow, when somebody is asking you in your interview or anywhere, why do you use a chart of account, how do you create a chart of account? In your mind, except a chart of account with transaction code, nothing will be there in your mind. You will only tell chart of account, chart of account means list of G L account, there are four steps in it. These are the four steps, there are four transaction codes, these are the X, Y, Z transaction code. Beyond this, nothing will be there in your mind, when you talk these points, anybody can easily identify, you are a trained candidate in S A P Fico. Don't give that representation to the other person. When you talk about S A P Fico to the other person, the other person should not get a feel that you are a trained candidate in S A P Fico. Why you are not supposed to give an impression because only trained candidate will talk definition T code. Only a trained candidate will talk about chart of account means definition of chart of account, whatever is there in the Google or different websites. And the T codes of the chart of account, how you are going to do the configuration of chart of account. Go to this screen, click on new entry, give four digit code, select this, put this, this, this. The person who got a train, the person who practiced a number of times chart of account will tell the same point. But if you are a consultant, if you work at least one day as a Fico consultant on chart of account, you will never talk about this. One day is enough for you to work as a Fico consultant, if you look at chart of account from a project point of view. From a real point, real time point of view, even a single day, you don't talk this way. Why, meaning this is not what you are looking at from a project point of view, this is not what your client is looking from you. Meaning you need to relate the things in such a way. Tomorrow when you talk, the other person should not get a feel that you are a trained candidate. Even if you tell that I am a trained candidate, I got S A P training recently, other person should not believe in you, that's it. Now it is the other way around, even if you tell that I am experienced, I have three year experience, other person is not believing you. Now the situation is even if you say I have three years of experience in S A P Fico, I have four years of experience in S A P Fico. Other person is not believing, we know the reason why the other person is not believing because the way we talk. The kind of confidence that we have, the kind of explanation that we are giving to the other person, he is not or she is not believing that you have experience. Now it has to be other way around. When I say it has to be other way around, even when you tell you do not have experience, you only have training knowledge. Other person should not believe it, they should say that no, with the training, you will not talk like this. And that is what should be your target, tomorrow in your interview. If your interviewer is getting a feel that you are talking definitions, you are talking configurations, you are talking only the T code. You are not understanding my point, you are not getting my scenario, they will upfront reject. Even though you are talking about valid point, correct transaction code, correct configuration but the way you are talking is representing. Trained knowledge or trained consulting or trained consultant, that impression please do not keep. Meaning right from the beginning, when you put your efforts in a right way, at the end of the day, you will be able to talk in a different way at least. I don't say completely you will transform as an experienced candidate, practically as we already discussed. Three months is not sufficient for you to you know gain the three years knowledge. It will take time, meaning you are not supposed to dump everything into your mind. Don't dump everything into your mind, you have to load your mind only with this selected content. That is going to help, that is going to help in your interview, that is going to help managing your work in the project tomorrow. Don't think that I have to practice everything, I will know everything, only then I will go to the market, only then I will attend interview, that is not going to happen. I also do not know many things. I also do not know many things, I openly say that I do not know many things. But whatever I know, I can manage with it and if you ask me a question, if I know, I can talk about it, I can give you an answer with which you will be convinced. I can talk about a topic with which the other person is convinced, they say that okay, this candidate knows something about it. That's it, I don't have to sit, practice everything, no, I don't do it. You are also not supposed to do it, if you practice it, you will be loading your mind only with the configuration, even if I close your. Even if I make you blindfolded, if I close your eyes like kids will play, tell me now I am on S A P F B fifty. O H zero two, tell me right hand side third column, this is not a Guinness World Book Record when I want you to tell me. From the top fourth column, okay, search help, very good, from bottom seventh column, business area, nobody is going to ask this. Nobody cares about whether you know the T code or not. Nobody cares about it, you are also not going to be bothered about it, if you are able to remember it, it is fine, if not, take everything. Take a screenshot, put it as your wallpaper in your mobile phone tomorrow. Put it as a screen saver, whenever you log the mobile phone, you see it, okay, you will put it. Or what you do, you put all the transaction codes whatever you have, whatever you have and keep it in your laptop as a. Your, what is this called, wallpaper. Write all the T codes whatever you have, baseline configuration, whatever you understand, don't blindly copy paste and put it at it. Take an Excel sheet, write down all the points according to your understanding. Take that as an image, take a screenshot, put it as an image, now on the desktop, everybody knows how to change the wallpaper. Your background image whatever you have, put that as, remove all the icons from your desktop, keep only one or two. The moment you open laptop, your laptop will show you all the things whatever you have listed on. Keep it, open your laptop, look at it and then you will come to know the points whatever you have and revise it. You have to follow different ways of your shortcuts with which you will be able to remember things. It's not that every day things, days will pass on, we will be adding a different, different content to it. Because we are not going to do the configuration, remember, it is difficult for you to understand. It will be practically not possible because if you notice. Hardly we have done anything in configuration or hardly we have done anything in the setting. So far, the T codes that we have used in the last fifteen days are only three. We have used only three settings, three configuration T codes in S A P so far. But we have been talking about S A P Fico from the last fifteen days, this is the fifteenth day. Fifteenth session, but we used only three transaction codes in S A P. Then what did we talk all these days, we have talked different content which you have to know, which you have to remember. Meaning all the fifteen sessions whatever we discussed are not related to S A P configurations directly which you can practice. But all those points are directly going to help you understand all the configurations in S A P Fico. It is the other way around. All the points whatever we discussed so far, every point is going to help you when you are in front of the system. When you are talking to somebody, when somebody is explaining the requirement, each and every point will help you out. Okay, now here when you are talking about chart of account, simply remember it is list of a G L account and there are three types of chart of account. In general, there are three types of chart of accounts. You have. Operating chart of account, you have. Group chart of account, you also have country chart of account or alternative chart of account. I'll say this group chart of account, operating chart of account. So whenever you talk about chart of account, keep in your mind chart of account is list of G L account. There are three types of chart of account, operating group, country chart of account, out of these three, this is mandatory. Operating chart of account is mandatory. Your operating chart of account is mandatory, without operating chart of account, you cannot record any debit, credit accounting entry in S A P. Usage of your group chart of account, usage of your country chart of account or alternative chart of account is completely optional. If you are creating a company code, you must use one operating chart of account. For one company, there will be one operating chart of account, when you are talking about a company, you are talking about a client. Now here you are talking about Oppo India, here you are talking about Oppo India, remove your country from here. Remove your country from here, if you remove the country, you are left with Oppo. Oppo India, Oppo Singapore, Oppo U S, Oppo China, Oppo whatever it is, Oppo any subsidiary company. Because tomorrow Oppo might acquire another company, Oppo may be doing the business with another company which may not contain Oppo in it. But it is part of Oppo group end of the day, all the Oppo associated companies, all the Oppo subsidiary companies. All the Oppo group companies will have to be part of Oppo. At Oppo level, you are going to create your operating chart of account, meaning irrespective of the country. Irrespective of the name of the legal entity, if this is part of Oppo. If this is part of Oppo, you are going to create single chart of account for all your legal entities, for all your company codes related to Oppo. Now why you need to remember this at the beginning of your practice? Because whenever we practice, we usually practice hardly three company's codes, four company codes, maximum five company codes. Meaning we usually do not go more than five company codes, nobody will practice more than five company codes end to end, two to three is maximum. If you have, if you are practicing two company codes end to end, that is great because we will not practically do it. Two, three company codes if you are doing it, these two, three company codes you will practice end to end. When I say these two, three company codes you will practice end to end, you are going to create Oppo as one company code. Second company code you may create as Dell, third company code you may create as Lenovo. Means these three company codes you are creating three different names. And obviously you are going to create three separate chart of account because according to our practice scenario, these three companies are different. These three company codes are different, meaning not related to each other. Usually whatever we do is the same thing, usually whatever we do is the same thing because. You don't practice under the same name, three different company codes, normally nobody does it. You are also not going to do it, but the point here is this is where we will start getting into unwanted confusions. What you are doing, you are creating three company codes, you are creating three chart of accounts. You are creating three company codes for your practice and for the purpose of your practice, you are ending up creating three chart of account. According to your practice, you are correct. From your practice point of view, you are correct because your three company codes are three separate legal entities. But when you see it from a real time point of view, at a time you are not going to work for three clients. As a real time consultant, at a time you are not going to work for three company codes, three clients. At a time you are not going to work for three separate client, meaning at a time you are going to work for only a single client. If you are talking about Oppo, you may be working for three company codes but these three are related to Oppo only. Even though you have three company codes, you are going to create one chart of account. Even though you have three company codes, you are going to create single chart of account when you are in a project, when you are in a real environment. But when you are in the practice environment, when you are practicing learning S A P Fico. If you are creating three company codes, you are creating three chart of account. In the real time, three company codes, one chart of account, in the practice, three company codes, three chart of account, there is a huge difference. And these differences is what we forget. These differences is what we forget because we are forgetting these differences. Tomorrow when you are in the interview, when you are in the project, when you are talking to anybody. You will get unwanted confusion, why they are telling like this, why they are telling like this, because we are not able to practically relate the things with each other. We are not able to practically relate the things with each other, since you are practically not connecting the things, you will miss the lot of logics. When you are missing the logic, automatically you will end up getting confused. These confusions will never allow you to be comfortable, these confusions will never allow you to be confident because. You know that you have confusions in the minute, minute, basic, fundamental, if you talk to somebody, the basics are not correct. You talk to somebody, basics are not correct, automatically the other person may think negatively, you don't even know what is chart of account. How I know that you know S A P Fico, how you completed S A P Fico course? People will straight away tell these things, people will straight away come to conclusions because your basics are not. people will straight away tell these things people will straight away come to conclusions because your basics are not strong you are not supposed to give that impression to any other person because in the interview majority of the times we will fail at this level only we will fail at this level only because you are not even able to decide or you are not even able to explain the basic organization structure of any company even after clearly giving this scenario by your interviewer interviewer is not asking you to tell on your own he is giving you or she is giving you in the interview this scenario if you have a client if you are operating in three countries if you have three legal entities how do you set up the organization structure then you need to talk you need to explain in such a way that the other person is convinced how we are going to talk how we are going to explain with which the other person is convinced is all based on your understanding if our initial understanding is correct automatically everything will be correct in SAP there are no multiple ways of connections there are only four ways there are only four ways and as an example if you want to go anywhere if you want to go anywhere you get chaurasta there what will happen you get only four ways left right front back either of the way you have to take that's it there is no way that you create on your own either you take left or you take right go straight go back if you are able to understand that there are four ways either of the way I need to pick hardly you may have to give three attempts four attempts but beyond the fourth attempt there is nothing nothing is left but what we will do even after giving ten attempts we will still try to find eleventh attempt because there is no fifth attempt only in the real time in the practical environment any error that you get any issue that you get any problem that you get there are only four ways of thinking maximum there are maximum four ways of thinking if one of the way if you are able to think you will automatically crack the any solution any problem any issue any difficult situation scenario that you are facing tomorrow if you are able to think in these three four ways you will get to you will get through any situation any problem any issue that you are facing with your client with your project with anybody everybody will give you the chance everybody will give you the time to think and to to answer to perform it's not that I will give you an answer and then I want you to give the right answer only one option nothing is going to happen like that especially for Fico nothing as such will happen whatever you do you will have sufficient time at least one night you have when I say at least one night you have if I give you something today I want I don't want you to do it today itself I am fine even if you give it to me tomorrow you have the whole night today you ask somebody you do full night out and then full research completely whatever the sources that you have you will get to know what it is tomorrow morning you can hand it over to me and this is what the situation or you can at least give me the explanation I tried all these kind of things I think these are all the challenges that we are able to see some information you will have but what we will do we will Google two three links we don't get anything we will sleep we will get up tomorrow morning we will say that I am trying it's not working though it is not working it is fine nothing will work in just one go certain things will take time but you need to understand how you are conveying that message to the other person don't look at a problem first try to understand the problem without understanding the problem we will look for a solution without understanding the problem majoritely we will look for a solution if you try to understand the problem the problem itself will give you the solution there especially in SAP that too in your Fico the problem error itself will give you more than fifty percent clue of the solution but what we will do if you see the error you will go Google it if you see the error message number you ask somebody or you want somebody to tell you every time but SAP itself is telling you what it is and what you need to do but what we will do we will forget about the problem we will focus on the solution when you do not know what is the problem there is no way you will get the solution even if you get multiple links on the Google multiple videos on the YouTube you do not know which one to refer which one to follow because you have no clarity on the problem this is another point where most of the people will struggle in the real time all these points all the areas where most of the people are currently struggling if you know from the beginning onwards slowly you will avoid this point when you avoid these points automatically you will not find you will not understand why everybody is fearing about SAP you have to think about the people who are currently working in SAP Fico as a consultant who are not comfortable who are not confident why they are not comfortable why they are not confident why they are not feeling uncomfortable how their work is coming on a daily basis how they are working on the requirement if you consider if you think through those point if you are able to prepare at that level at that standard you are setting a standard where your target is your project not your interview you are not targeting to understand any particular topic whatever we discuss for the purpose of defining a setting saving a setting without any error that is not our target our target if you are in a project tomorrow you have been asked to do this you are not going to do the you are not going to do the config blindly you are going to ask you are going to understand what is this configuration how you are going to do it what is the requirement according to the requirement how you will set it up in system is it something that you directly set it up or is there anything that you need to ask when you get to know these points automatically the way you work will differ will differ the way you think the way you work everything will get changed that is the only reason I do not show configuration straightforward that is the only reason I don't go to the config straightforward because I don't want anybody to focus on configuration I don't want anybody to spend lot of your time on understanding a config because with the help of configuration hundred percent you will not get the job not even a one percent chance you will get selected in your interview with config hundred percent you are not going to get selected in any interview with your configuration knowledge hundred percent I am telling not even ninety nine percent I am confidently telling you hundred percent you will get rejected if you know only configuration if you talk only config in any interview when you know that hundred percent there is a rejection if you talk configuration you need to understand why people are rejecting because you are talking only config anybody can talk config but how you are relating this config how you are explaining with this configuration scenario requirement matters there okay now from the chart of account one point you need to remember that is your list of GL account second point remember there are three type of chart of account operating group country chart of account out of these three one is mandatory remaining two are completely optional operating chart of account is mandatory for any organization without operating chart of account your day to day debit credit accounting entries are not possible in SAP if you want to record debit credit accounting entry operating chart of account is mandatory now to define a chart of account whether it is operating whether it is group whether it is country procedure process is the same procedure process is the same irrespective of the nature of chart of account whether it is operating group country the way you create in SAP is one and the same there is no difference the only point is purpose of the chart of account is different creation configuration part of the configuration is the same in SAP okay now what we are going to create is operating chart of account group country we are not creating at this moment because if you create at this moment you will get confused between this so we will be trying to create we will be trying to understand only operating chart of account which is mandatory for any organization to do any chart of account your T code is OB thirteen to create any chart of account OB one three and then to do any assignment it is your OB sixty two to do the account groups this is your OBD four to define the retained earnings account this is your OB fifty three these are the three transaction codes which you have to remember with respect to chart of account chart of account definition is OB thirteen I'll copy OB thirteen T code now see how I am going to configure the system I'll come here go to SAP come back put the T code OB thirteen enter you will come to this screen add a new entry now here comes the point I you can put any four digit you can put any description you can choose any language you can put any length you can put group chart of account if you are using a group chart of account functionality you can save it now how do you know what is the four digit chart of account code here you will come to know what is the four digit chart of account code based on the K D S A document K D S is nothing but key data structure okay key data structure document will be there based on this key data structure document you will come to know what is the four digit code that you are going to create when you practice what we will do we will put any code while practicing we will put A B C D X Y Z one two three four five six you will put you will save it because there is no client there is no process there is no requirement in our mind our target is only to create our target is only to save it get a T R number without getting any error meaning we feel happy we appreciate ourselves we are creating the configuration no errors are coming I am creating three times four times I am very good but that is wrong meaning our thought process our way of practicing our way of looking at the system is wrong here this will be discussed with your client at the beginning itself when I say this will be discussed with your client at the beginning itself initially you are going to have business requirement gathering sessions you will be conducting business process discussions or your workshops when you're conducting workshop and all you are going to understand with sit and understand discuss with your client about their process you are going to explain SAP process also in this process they are going to tell you are going to explain that this is how SAP will work you need to create a chart of account at client level you are going to create a chart of account when you're talking about client level now Oppo is a client in our situation now from here on slowly you have to get used to the terminologies if you are reading the definitions that is where you get confused if you read the definitions of a client client will tell some three digit number code independent data table and all will come if you Google it but in general when you're working in any project when you talk about client you are talking about Oppo is your client Oppo is your client now here also you have a client if you see here here also there is a client one hundred here I am talking about client one hundred here I am talking about client Oppo both the cases I am right but the context is different scenario is different situation is different now you are consulting knowledge your consulting skill set your consulting experience comes here if I am talking about client don't tell me hundred if I ask what is your client then don't tell your you mean development quality production don't ask me this somebody is asking you in your interview or anywhere who is your client what is your client don't tell me my client is hundred my client is two hundred one hundred one twenty one ten numbers don't tell because according to the definitions preparation what you have had that is what your definition would have taught you but in general when somebody is talking to you nobody will ask you this client number when you talk to anybody nobody will ask this client number they are asking you for which client you are working they are asking you which client you are working even when you look at your resume and all everybody will tell you know your client round is there client interview is there what is client round client interview what do they mean by client there that is how you have to slowly connect to the points when you are connecting to the points which we will be using in the real environment in the project in the interview everywhere automatically you will connect to the other person's question you will answer you will answer in such a way with which the other person is impressed or he is convinced because most of the times people will give answers in such a way that the other person will not select you no matter what because basic basic fundamentals also you do not know now you are coming sitting in front of me you are telling me you have three year experience you have a four years experience you did implementation you did rollout you did support but you do not even know what is the client how I will believe that you have three years of experience when you are not even able to understand when you are not even able to explain me the basic fundamentals this is where people will get rejected this is where one can easily figure it out and understanding these points is what you have to invest a little more time at the beginning because this it's a one time effort when I say this is a one time effort again and again you are not supposed to come here again and again you are not supposed to practice prepare on this one time you need to inject in your mind in such a way that you will never forget it and anything that you are working wherever you go these things will remain as it is these are the basic fundamental basic foundation if you are good at this if you are good at understanding this point there is no point tomorrow you will get into any confusion understand in such a way with this knowledge tomorrow if you work anywhere for any client for any company you will be able to manage confidently that one that point is what you need to keep in your mind all the time don't think that I am why I am spending lot of time on this small small things I can easily configure in fifteen minutes fifteen minutes you will configure fifteen seconds you will forget that is what is the reality as you as we progress you will start realizing the facts at this moment it may be a little you know the difficult to digest the sudden things but going forward as you move forward as the days pass by you will realize everything whatever we are talking right from the day one so here what I will do I am going to create a chart of account which will which is your operating chart of account strictly you have to put a description Oppo operating chart of accounts no shortcuts here first you need to understand Oppo operating C O A while practicing it is fine everything is fine because you are the one who is practicing you are the one who is testing you are the one who is looking at it it's fine but understand when you are in a project this is not the way when you are in a project this is not the way understand how you are supposed to work in a project if you are clear with how you are going to work in a project in the real time after that you create the way you want you put shortcuts A B C D X Y Z your choice because you know how you are going to work in the project and once you know that this is how I am going to work in the project and then you can clearly segregate this is only for the practice purpose I am creating in this way as long as you are clear as long as you have clarity you can do whatever the way you want but if you do not have a clarity please don't experiment left and right next point you will have to put a description here description is something that will be listed in your K D S A document similarly this is your four digit code this is there is something called a naming convention or nomenclature this naming convention is something which is already discussed decided by the client and then the consulting team what will be your chart of account what will be the four digit identification for example I I assume that since we are creating only one I would say O P I N company code is only I am going to create it as a chart of account for time being when we create our K D S when we create our key data structure document I will explain you in detail on what basis we will be creating it how you will propose it how you will make your client understand on all these points now what I am doing I am creating chart of account as O P I N description as Oppo operating chart of account maintenance language in which language you want to put all your GL account description whether you want to put it in Arabic or any other German Greek English Spanish whatever majoritely your operating chart of account is always created in English language majoritely your operating chart of account is always created in English language here also we will be creating it in English language only this is first point next point is your length of GL account number when you are talking about length of GL account number every GL account should have a length and it has to be a unique consistent consistent length when I say unique consistent length one GL account if it is having five digit every GL account should have five digits only I cannot say some accounts three digits some account five digits some account six digit eight digit not acceptable all the GL accounts from your chart of account should have strictly the same length should have strictly the same length now this length is something that you will be deciding at the beginning itself at the beginning itself you will be deciding majoritely you will be using only two lengths as standard point number one you can use six digit or you can use eight digits we will be using either six digit GL account number or eight digit GL account number currently we don't use six digit majoritely we will be proposing we will be proceeding with eight digit GL account length eight digit GL account length minimum is one digit maximum is ten digits but most commonly used length is eight digit and keep in your mind in such a way that tomorrow if somebody is asking you have you worked on any implementation yes do you know baseline configuration yes have you created chart of account in any project yes what is the length of GL account that you have used all of a sudden we will go blank somebody might ask you if you get a you know a interviewer who is asking you at this level who is specifically asking you how you did what you did tell me what is your code and all you have to be very confident if somebody is asking you how many what is the length of a GL account that you used in your previous project in your current project you cannot say I do not know you are telling that you are working in the current project from last one year from last two years to last six months you cannot say I do not know what is the length of GL account number you cannot say this meaning when you are practicing you have to practice on certain areas you have to be very careful if you are telling eight digit you have to say why you created a digit if you say that six digit why six digit when you tell six digit when you tell eight digit any digit beyond seven six is outdated six digit GL account is outdated we will be using eight Six digit G L account is outdated, we will be using eight digit majorityly, in case if somebody is asking you strictly tell. In your project for your chart of account, you have adopted, you in this sense, your client had adopted eight digit G L account number. When you tell these points, other person will not raise any question, when you are not telling this point, other persons will raise different questions. Okay, when you do not raise this point, other persons will raise the different questions, make sure at this level you do not have any confusion. Okay, and then group chart of account, we will not be using it, blocked indicator, you will not be using it. So for time being, you have to remember only four field, chart of account code, you put same like your company code for time being. Description strictly, client name followed by operating chart of account, maintenance language is English. Length of G L account is eight and then press enter. When you press enter, make sure there are no messages at the bottom, click on save. This is your chart of account, whatever the T R it comes, you blindly save it, don't try to. Go to own request, this is not my T R and all, don't look at it, whatever comes here, just blindly press enter here, don't even think about it. Don't get deviated from what you are doing, what you are understanding by. Looking at the T R, this is not my T R, I will create a new T R, you are not in a project at this moment. You try to understand the points which you are supposed to understand at this moment for this particular topic, don't get deviated by. Configuration, T R and all, that I will make you understand in detail in the upcoming sessions. If you are able to know how to create a T R, that is more than sufficient, when you press Ctrl S, whatever comes, close your eyes, press enter, that's it. Don't look at it, what it is, this is not my T R, this is somebody else's T R, if I put it, put it in this, what will happen, don't even think about it. Not at all relevant, don't even think about it, blindly close your eyes, press enter on any T R request that you get it. You are only concerned about whether you are getting data versus saved messages or not. If you are able to see data was saved, that is more than sufficient. Where it is saved, ignore it, you are not bothered about it. This is a first setting where you are creating your operating chart of account, if you are creating a group chart of account. If you are creating country specific chart of account, except a description, nothing will change. Operating will become group. Or operating will become country, otherwise, the way that you are defining here, it will be the same for any chart of account. If somebody is asking you how do you create group chart of account, how do you create operating chart of account, how do you create country chart of account, it is the same. Except the description, there is nothing difference in it, the assignments will make the difference, creation will not make any difference. Okay, come back from this screen, chart of account is created, next thing is to do the chart of account, assignment with the company code. Chart of account assignment with the company code, you will be doing in O B sixty two. Go to O B sixty two, press enter. If you come here. As we discussed, whenever you talk about any assignment, majorityly, there is no new entries in the assignment screen. Whenever you do any assignment, you don't find any new entries, then what you will do. You have to do the assignment of chart of account to your company code. Here company code is already created, chart of account is newly created, meaning in the system, company code is there, chart of account is there. While creating a company code, you had no company, no chart of account option. While creating the chart of account, you had no company code option, that is why you are creating a connection between these two. That is why you are creating the connection, if I show you company code. O X zero two. Okay, enter. If I look at any company code here. This is your company code screen, on the company code screen, there is nothing called chart of account here, meaning. While creating a chart of account, you do not know, sorry, while creating a company code, you have no option called company code. Sorry, chart of account. While creating a company code, there is no option called chart of account, on the other side. While creating a chart of account. While creating a chart of account, there is no option called company code anywhere. When I say company code, we are talking about the field names, this is your chart of account, this is description. Maintenance language, length, group chart of account blocked, like this, there is nothing called company code here. And in the company code screen, there is nothing called chart of account, meaning though company code is already available, though. Chart of account is already available, but these two are not connected to each other, that connection is what you are establishing. By doing another setting called assignment. In the assignment, you have no new entries because you are not creating anything newly here. You are connecting two existing record, one is your company code, two is your chart of account, to find out. To find out the key for your chart of account assignment, you have to look at it, when you are looking at it, there are few fields. Company code, name, city, chart of account, what is editable, what is not editable, you have to see. Whatever is not editable is represented as a key field. Is represented as a key field. Whatever is not editable is represented as a key field, key field is not supposed to be duplicated. Key field is not supposed to be duplicated, if you see this. Chart of account is editable. Chart of account is editable. Editable thing can be duplicated, that is why you can see I N T here, I N T here. You can see triple one, triple one, or you can see double one, double one here, because this is editable. Editable means not a key field, key field can be duplicated, now here if you see these are all grayed out. These are all grayed out means, these are key field, I cannot duplicate company code, company code cannot appear more than one time. Company code cannot appear more than one time, now what I will do, I will go to position, position is nothing but find. If you are clicking on position, you are finding your company code, look at this field here. It is your company code, you are trying to find your company code, click on your company code, we know what is our company code, we have created. Oppo India, O P I N, I will put O P I N here. Click on continue. At this your company code level, there is no chart of account currently. For our company code currently chart of account is blank, input a chart of account, but if you see this here, there are two fields. If you see this, there are two fields, one is your chart of account, two is alternative chart of account. First one is your operating chart of account, second one is your country chart of account, third one is your group chart of account, if you remember. Group chart of account is inside the operating chart of account. If I show you this. O B thirteen. Now here is your group chart of account, we have talked about three chart of account, one is, this is your operating, this is your country, this is your group, meaning. Operating chart of account is assigned to the company code. Alternative chart of account or country chart of account is assigned to the company code. But group chart of account is assigned to the operating chart of account or the country chart of account. Group chart of account is not directly connected to company code, group chart of account is connected to either. Operating chart of account or country chart of account, this operating chart of account or country chart of account is connected to company code. If your company code is representing one operating chart of account, if this operating chart of account has got a group chart of account. Then your company code is representing operating plus group both. Meaning you need to understand how your chart of accounts are connected to your company code, don't just look at it. O B sixty two, I will select my company code, I will put my chart of account, not sufficient. Anybody will tell this. But you need to tell, if you are asked a question in your interview, can you tell me how you are connecting your chart of accounts to your company code? On what basis system will determine, system will understand that your company code has got three chart of account. Or how many chart of accounts can you create in S A P, you can create three chart of accounts in S A P. But how many chart of accounts can you assign to your company code in S A P, you can assign only two, then what about the third one? Third one is assigned to company code, not in a direct way, but in a indirect way. How indirectly it is connected to company code, you need to talk about, group chart of account is always assigned. Inside the operating chart of account or inside the country chart of account. And there, when you assign it, if this chart of account which has got a group chart of account connected to it. Whenever this chart of account is assigned to your company code, your company code is reading the two chart of accounts. Operating plus operating a connected group chart of account, when you are able to tell this, other person feels yes, this candidate knows what is what. Otherwise, this candidate knows only the T code, only the configuration. Easily they get to know what is the answer. So this representation you have to avoid. Not everywhere, but wherever possible, wherever you can tell the relevant points, practical points, please tell the points there itself. So that you will have a good representation to the other person. Now here I am going to assign our operating chart of account which is O P I N. Okay, now here also I can put O P I N, it will come from here also. Because the way that you create any chart of account is one and the same, that is why here and here it is coming, I am not going to assign any alternative chart of account. This is used only for the selected countries, where there is electronic ledger reporting or where you have a specific reporting requirement. That is where of alternative is used, otherwise, we don't use it, this is used only for selected countries like China, Russia, certain countries. Where there is e ledger reporting, e reporting concept. According to that country guidelines, the way you have to submit your financials is different. So that's where your operating chart of account, your country chart of account are different, otherwise, there is no rule, there is no requirement of it. Press enter after this, click on save. Your assignment is completed, technically to do the configuration, creation will not take more than one minute. Assignment will not take more than one minute, your chart of account creation, chart of account assignment, even if you. Take leisurely maximum three minutes, hardly if you do very lazily five minutes. But to understand it takes a little time. And third setting. Third setting, whatever we need to do after this is your account groups. Third setting, whatever you do after this is your account group, when you are talking about account group, we were talking about a point called. T B, P N L, balance sheet, whenever you talk about a T B, whenever you talk about P N L, whenever you talk about balance sheet. Now in general, what will happen? Whether you talk about a T B, whether you talk about P N L, whether you talk about a balance sheet, you are talking about account classification. You broadly classify your accounts into two categories. We broadly classify our accounts into two categories, one is your P N L accounts. Two is your balance sheet account. One is your P N L account, two is your balance sheet account, within P N L account, you are going to classify as. Incomes. Expenses, within balance sheet, you are going to call it as assets and liabilities. You are going to represent your P N L account as income and expenses, balance sheet as asset and liability, now here comes another confusion. What confusion comes here? Somebody says why I should call income and expenses, I can also call it as. Expense and income, yes, this is also correct, somebody says why I should call asset and liability. I can also call it as liability and asset, both are possible. Somebody says income and expenses. Somebody says asset and liability, on the other side, somebody say expense and income, somebody say liability and asset. Now understand which. Categorization you are picking up. Understand which categorization you are picking up, both are possible. When I say both are possible, it completely depends on the business client requirement, how they want to represent it, how they want to look at it. There is no hard rule that this is how you have to use it, there is no principle for this. All it requires is whether your P N L contains income and expense. Whether your balance sheet contains asset and liability, that's it. Now here what you need to do, whenever you talk about any balance sheet, nobody tells asset, nobody tells liability asset, everybody tell. Balance sheet contains asset and liability. When you are talking about P N L, nobody tells expense and income, everybody will tell income and expenses, because we are all habituated to say in this way. But when you see it from the practical financial statement point of view, practical P N L point of view. First on the P N L, you always write expense on the debit side, income on the credit side, your client may tell. We are writing expense first, I want expense to be represented first, we are writing income next, I want income to be represented next. Similarly, when you look at any balance sheet, your client may say, we are putting liabilities first, I want liability to be represented first. We are putting asset next, I want asset to be represented next. Meaning it completely different, it completely differs based on the person, based on the client, based on the user, you have to be flexible. Don't feed in your mind in such a way that you, this is how you are understanding, only when you hear this, you will say right. When you hear the other way around, you will say no, this is not correct. This is not supposed to be the situation, you are supposed to be flexible, when I say you are supposed to be flexible. Tomorrow when you are in the project, tomorrow when you are talking to the different people, different people will tell you things in different ways. It is up to your understanding, it is up to your knowledge, your, your skill set. How you are relating it to it, I may be telling in a different way. The other person may be telling in a different way, another person may be telling in a different way, according to me, I am correct, according to A, he is correct. According to B, B, he is correct, now according to you, you have to understand in my way when you are talking to me. Understand in A's way when you are talking to A, understand in B's way when you are talking to B. That is where you are represented, that is where you are doing justice to your consulting job, otherwise, there is no difference, you are not. Applying your consulting mindset. You are not applying consulting mindset because everybody will talk in different ways. Terminology, the meanings and all, sometimes as a client I may be telling wrong. But if you tell me that I am wrong, then I will get hurt, I will get upset, I feel so bad. Then you have to talk to me in such a way that wherein you should not say I am wrong, but you have to convince me in such a way with your explanation, yes. And even if I tell wrong, you understand it in a right way. Tomorrow don't tell me this is what you told, and then you told me wrong, then if I am telling you wrong, then what you are doing? As a consultant, you are the more experienced guy, you are more familiar with the S A P, I talked from my business point of view. I talked from my accounting point of view, you are the guy from S A P point of view, you are supposed to understand according to S A P, how this is created. This is not the right way of creating in S A P, what is the right way, what is the best way? You are supposed to propose me, you are supposed to recommend, this is how we will be using it, this is how S A P standard says. This is how S A P best practices says, this is how most of the clients are using in the S A P. Meaning how you are able to tell this only when you understand how things are used in the system. Meaning you are not supposed to feed in your mind, this is the fixed way. Things will not be fixed, project to project, company to company, consultant to consultant, person to person, the way they think, the way they talk, the way they use differ. It will not be fixed, meaning as a consultant, you have to be flexible enough to understand their client system work according to that. Because your understanding may be different, the way they implemented there may be different. Don't try to get confused, don't try to blame anybody, know why you created this, this is all wrong and all. There may be a different requirement there, why they created that way? If this is wrong, then it would not have gone live, right, somebody created, somebody tested, somebody approved, all these things are in place, that is when it went live. Maybe this solution may be wrong, but the way it is not wrong. When I say solution may be wrong, meaning it could have been done a little better way, you could have done it in a better way, but you did it this way. But this is taking me in a wrong way or long route, this is creating a little confusion to understand, these kind of things are quite common in any project. But make sure wherever you are working in any project, according to the project, you try to understand, according to the project. Mold yourself and then behave as per that client business process according to that organization structure, don't try to. Bring your understanding from your training, don't try to bring your understanding from your previous project, you don't get confused, don't create confusion in the project team. Don't create confusion to your user, that will affect your job. They simply say that no, why you are telling all these things, this is how we are using it from last two years. Now you are coming, you are telling this is wrong, that is wrong, you are not supposed to point out. If it is wrong, but tell them in a different way how you can make it right, how you can make it better. Okay, now when we were talking about account group, first point you need to remember. P N L account, balance sheet account, these are the two classifications, within P N L, there are two, within balance sheet, there are two. Now. Within P N L, within balance sheet, if you take income. If you take income, you don't put everything blindly under income, under income there are certain classification. Under income, when I say there are certain classification, operating income, sales income, non-operating income, mislieness income. Interest received, discount received, there may be different headings according to each of the accounting standard. interest received discount received there may be different headings according to each of the accounting standard if I am preparing my financial statements in India I have to follow Indian accounting standards or I have to follow Indian Companies Act according to that I need to prepare my financials otherwise the auditor whoever is verifying your financials at the end of the year your chartered accountant he will not approve it if I prepare my P N L randomly like left and right I will put it my chartered accountant will not approve the financial as you know without having the chartered accountant signature and seal your P N L your balance sheet is not valid you need to get acknowledgement from your chartered accountant stating that all the accounting whatever you did is all legal is or all genuine is or all validated now your chartered accountant will approve it only when you follow the rules and regulations format guidelines everything as per the respective accounting standard similarly when you are preparing the balance sheet you have to make sure the balance sheet format is properly followed don't dump everything as asset don't dump everything as asset within asset there are classification like fixed asset current asset investments short term investment long term investment accounts repay accounts receivable current assets or your prepaid expenses whatever you have you have a classification headings some headings in your accounting if you remember your graduation your intermediate wherein you you would have prepared the balance sheet wherein you would have put different different headings side headings same heading same side heading you have to understand and these are the headings which you will be provided by your client your client your user will give you their current format of their P N L current format of their balance sheet in which they are going to tell these are the accounts which we are grouping they said that we are grouping assets into different categories like fixed asset current asset grouping they will give under liability capital retained earnings reserves accounts payable you know the short term loans long term loans different other things they will put similarly according to that you have to design how many account groups you are supposed to create which account group is part of which nature of account balance sheet or P N L within the balance sheet is it asset liability income expense when you are deciding this you have to decide the first number first when I say first number or a starting digit here what I mean to say is we were talking about this is one approach here I would say always we will begin from balance sheet so I would say asset as one or let me put one I will put one for asset I will put two for liabilities I will put three for income I will put four for expense this is one way on the other side I may put liability one I may put asset two sorry and then I may put expense three I may put income four now if you see there is no change except the numbering because my sequence is changing numbering is different because my sequence is changing here I am talking about asset liability one two here I am talking about liability asset one two in one project you may be finding assets are beginning from one series in the other project you may find assets are beginning from two series don't get confused whether they are correct or these are correct both are correct that is according to their requirement this is according to the other person requirement sometimes this may be a recommendation by a client sometimes this may be a recommendation by a consultant both are possible but don't get confused this is right this is wrong because both are correct depending on the situation depending on the requirement accordingly you need to remember now currently what we will do we will be creating only four account groups we will be proceeding with this approach because this is what is most commonly used approach in the real environment this also you will find but this is you will find more so what I will do I will create the account group for the account group creation T code is O B D four open O B D four and in this add a new entry now first write down what are the names that you have I have assets I have liabilities I have incomes I have expenses four only I am taking currently now you need to write down for which a chart of account are you creating it it is asking for a chart of account we have already created a chart of account before that you see a empty screen here before that you will find an empty screen here whenever you find empty screen like this do not press enter until you are done with your input until you fill up everything please do not press enter if you press enter see what will happen it will do like this it will stop you everywhere every step it will stop you which will irritate you while you are practicing the point that you are getting to this situation is you are pressing enter unintentionally unconsciously because we are all used to do work in any Excel sheet any notepad everywhere you press enter you go to next the same habit will come here which you have to avoid meaning when you are practicing S A P you have to be conscious I will come out of it cancel this and again I will do it I will put asset liabilities incomes expenses point to be noted here is you are not supposed to press enter and you need to know for which a chart of account are we creating it you created a chart of account O P I N here oppose operating chart of account put this here next one you can create one group which is your maximum four digits length so I am not creating anything as of now now the logic is one two three four this is the logic what is this logic assets are identified by one liabilities are identified by two income is identified by three expense is identified by four meaning any account number in short any G L account number if you are talking about if you are looking at a G L account number which starts from one is representing that this is asset similarly any account number which is starting from two is representing this is liability any account number which is starting from three it is representing an income any account number which is starting from four is representing this is an expense this is the logic now when you created the chart of account you have given length of G L account number in the chart of account we have given length of G L account number there you have given eight digits currently you have only four groups currently you have only four groups so straight away to make it eight digits seven digits are short I am going to put seven zeros one two three four five six seven now if I count it this is now eight digit in length one followed by seven zeros now what I will do I will copy this is seven zeros I will put everywhere this is my starting number next thing what I will do range I have to give again I will put one here two here three here four here now to complete a range I need to put one followed by all remaining digits to make it eight digit account number I have seven digits is shortage last number what I will do I will put all lines to make it eight digit seven digits are length short I am going to put seven times nine one two three four five six seven now what is happening your from account to account is one followed by all zeros to one followed by all nines meaning any G L account number within this range is representing asset I will copy all the nines I will put everywhere okay I will copy all the nines I will put everywhere this is representing asset liability income expense there is a control here what is the control system will not allow you to create any account for asset other than this range any account for asset is not possible to be created other than this range similarly any account for liability is not supported other than this range meaning if you wanted to create a liability you have to create an account between this range only beyond the range it will not allow you to create that is the control point which your account group is doing here and for this second group you need to put one identification which is four digit normally what we will do first four digits of your account group will become the account group code first four digits of your account number range in this case usually if you are working in any real environment most commonly used logic is one thousand two thousand three thousand four thousand this is what you will do what is the logic that I am applying here first four digits of your account number first four digits of your account number here this may be available this may not be available so what I will do is I will put O P ten I am going to put O P twenty this is only for the testing purpose when we create it we will list out clearly in our K D S document this is O P forty press enter now if you see these two things have become grayed out and the remaining things are editable meaning these are dynamic these are fixed anything which is grayed out once you press enter is a key field key field cannot be duplicated nobody can create with this combination another record these two are getting read out means at this two combination level system is making a unique record it will concatenate this and this it will give a unique record at O P I N O P forty cannot be duplicated if I try to put this again O P I N O P forty for example five and six it is giving a message an entry already exists with the same key why it is giving a error message because this combination O P I N O P forty is already here since these two are getting a grayed out those are represented as key field key field cannot be duplicated key field cannot be duplicated press enter like this click on save now all this information you will be getting you will be getting in your K D S document in short when you are in a project this is a control C control V activity the same set you will be updating along with the client in the Excel sheet during your business requirement gathering sessions and then the same data will be part of your K D S from K D S you will do control C control B now I will save this record enter account groups are created next thing is to create the retained earnings account for creation of retained earnings account you have to use another T code code O B fifty three go to O B fifty three if you go to O B fifty three it is asking for a chart of account put same chart of account O P I N here it is asking you P N L statement account it is asking P N L statement account it is blindly X this is blindly X okay this is standard X only nobody will ask you why X because this is fixed X next one here there is an account and this is your balance carry forward this is a balance carry forward when you are talking about balance carry forward you have two types of account one is P N L account other one is balance sheet account here it is asking balance carry forward it is clearly talking about P N L statement account type it is clearly talking about P N L statement account type you have two account types P N L accounts balance sheet account meaning your retained earnings account is always related to P N L types meaning income and expenses from the P N L account type with the help of income and expenses you are going to find out either profit or loss you are going to find out either profit or loss if we go back to our accounting basics if you go back to your accounting basics what we will do whenever you prepare any balance sheet to the capital we will add in the balance sheet you have for example capital in the capital you will do plus or minus profit or loss this is what normally we all do in our accounting in our basic accounting to the capital you will do the plus or minus profit or loss and then your drawings any drawings any withdrawal that you have done from your business or any profit loss that you get you are going to adjust it with your capital this I hope everybody remembers it same logic here also in S A P there is no magic here the same logic what you are going to do whatever the profit whatever the loss that you get from your P N L it is supposed to be taken into balance sheet it is supposed to be taken into balance sheet in balance sheet what you will do basically in your manual accounting you are doing it in you are adding or adjusting to capital what is capital capital is asset or liability capital is liability according to your accounting group logic what is the number range for liability according to your number range logic your liability is coming under two series now you put an account number put an account number from the two series from the two series which is your liability which if you have created any specific account group for retained earnings or reservation surplus normally in the real time you will be having an account group called retained earnings or reservation surplus if any such account group is created from that account group you put one account number if not from the liability number range you put any number currently we have not created account group segregation you created only single account group called a liability what I will do I am creating a number like eight digit I am creating two thousand two thousand normally these accounts and all will be clearly updated in the K D S document from their control C control V controllers only three things for your config control C copy from your K D S document control V paste it in S A P controllers save it in S A P you don't need to apply any mind here blindly copy paste controllers now after this press enter whenever you press enter you get a message from here you start understanding there are three types of messages in S A P usually one is your error message two is your warning message three is your information message error message will always come with red light error message will always come with red light warning message always comes with green light sorry your yellow light information comes with no light for information there is no light you will only get a pop up when you press enter you can ignore it warning information you can ignore it by pressing enter on the keyboard warning and information you can ignore by pressing enter on the keyboard in case if it is an error message you cannot skip you cannot ignore the error now currently you have to look at it this is not a red light this is a yellow light yellow light means warning message any warning message you can ignore by pressing enter on the keyboard I just press enter on the keyboard okay one time only you need to press enter again you press enter again it will come so make sure you press enter one slowly one by one until that disappears once that disappears click on controllers save as I said any T R which is coming please ignore it just blindly press enter don't think about T R's and all unwanted things whatever I am telling not to think not to consider please do not think do not consider it I will tell you when to consider I will tell you when to think at that moment only you think till then do not do anything which I am not talking which I am not telling in the class okay now this is saved now with this four steps we have completed what four steps we have completed chart of account we created account group we have created chart of account assignment is completed read and earnings second we have completed now here you need to place everything O P I N is the chart of account and we assigned O P I N to O P I N account groups I am not writing anything here retained earnings second also we completed now next one fiscal year posting period I will cover in the next session which is tomorrow tomorrow we will talk about what is your fiscal year what is your posting period variant and slowly we will cover all the settings once we complete all the settings we will post one entry we will see the P N L balance sheet of whatever we discussed then everybody will have a thorough understanding at least you will have a basic understanding with which when I start the actual configuration you can practically connect what I am talking why we are talking how you will exactly do it in a project you can practically relate to it okay I will stop this here now any questions so far you can ask Dina
okay I had a question regarding the Gmail you said in the beginning do I have to create a new one or I can provide the existence one
email ID
yes Gmail you said in the beginning
yeah yeah create a Gmail ID maybe with your name like the way you create your personal email ID in the similar way you create one ID and then give that ID password to me
ID and password both
yes ID and password
okay so
and remember this ID and password this ID and password will be shared by others also which I will share with the others make sure passwords you will put no not your personal content then a generic password you put it
okay alright
okay yeah yeah alright Jayya
yes Ajay um my laptop I can't install the setting I guess I texted you in WhatsApp
this I will assist tomorrow this installations or the logins whoever is having issues I will assist tomorrow yes tomorrow while I will be free tomorrow I will assist you tomorrow
okay thank you
Radhika
hi Ajay what is the purpose of group chart of account and normally when do we use it
group chart of account is used only for the consolidation in S A P when you talk about consolidation if you are using two different chart of accounts to combine the data from two different chart of account you will be using group chart of account for example you have three company codes you are using three separate chart of account now for me to do a consolidation I need to say that my total expense of rent I would say from company code one company code two company code three is hundred 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 my total expense is three hundred
yes
and if I am using same operating chart of account for three company codes straight away I can pull straight away I can pull my total expenses three hundred in case for these three company codes I am using three different operating chart of account from different chart of accounts I cannot do the consolidation what I will do I will create one more chart of account called group inside each operating chart of account I will put group chart of account for every group chart of account there is a group account number while creating the account G L account master I will show you this group chart of account how we will be using it alternative chart of account how we will be using it because without operating chart of account we cannot use group and alternative
okay as per my understanding for three operating chart of accounts there will be one group chart of account which should be assigned to the operation chart of accounts
yes you are right yes
okay thank you
yeah Shanti
ah hi Ajay so one we create one operation chart of account and one group charter account for each and every company code
operating chart of account is mandatory irrespective of a number of company codes you will be using single operating chart of account in the real time because in the real time you are saying that you are working for O P O forget about how many company codes O P O is having O P O will have single chart of account okay
okay so see for example if I have O P I N O P I S and O P Singapore so I will have only one chart of account as O P P O and all these company codes are assigned to O P P O chart of account is it correct
yes you are right
yeah and then a group who charter for count will be created and it will be assigned to which company code group charter for count
if you are using same chart of account for all the company codes there is no point of group chart of account group chart of account you will use when you are using multiple operating chart of account
okay and so now I have multiple chart of different chart of accounts for each and every company code and I create a group charter for count for consolidation and this group charter for count will be assigned to which company code
it is not directly assigned to the company code group chart of account is assigned to the each of your operating chart of account in your scenario you created three operating chart of accounts in each of the operating chart of account you will be assigning same group chart of account because you will have one group chart of account three operating chart of accounts agree
yes
in each of the operating chart of account you are going to put same group chart of account
okay so basically there will be no assignment of company for group chart of accounts so the creation of operating chart of accounts for example O P I N we go to the group of a group charter for concession and that field and we select the group of charter group charter of accounts over there right
right right when you assign this operating to company code company code is connected to operating operating is connected to group so that way it gets connected
okay so in all the three chart operation chart of account and select the same group chart of account
correct
okay thank you Ajay
yeah Yerfan
yeah I am good
yes sir my question is related to assignment of for chart of account to company code basically in my case I choose four different companies and all different companies located in different in region like one is located in U S and another in Mexico Canada and India also so my question is like fiscal year fiscal year of every new company code is different so do I need to use a separate chart of account or just create one chart of account on to all of the subsidiaries how it will work
when you say four different company codes are these four completely different or are these four part of same group
no it's a part of same group
it is part of same group you have to create usually we will not create separate chart of account more than ninety percent of the cases it will be the same chart of account for all the company codes
okay irrespective of their fiscal year right
yes yes fiscal year has got no connection with your chart of account these two are completely two different setup
okay okay
okay
yes clear
thank you Sanjay
hi Ajay my question is what is the difference between operating chart of account and country Pacific chart of account and another question is if there is a three companies one company suppose there is one G L is a telephone and communication telephone and fax expenses other company are using telephone and mobile expenses and one company is using telephone and postage expenses but in the group chart of account it is a communication expenses how it is consolidated for that
in that case what you will do in each of the company code you are having different chart of accounts and in each of the company code you have a different name for that respective expense right
yes
and for your consolidation purpose you wanted to group everything as communication expenses
correct correct
is that what your point so in this case what you will do from your group chart of account you will create a G L account called communication charges or communication expense okay
okay
and whenever you create the respective G L account in each of your company code whatever the name that you are putting while creating the G L account in your company code operating chart of account there will be a column called group account number or group chart of account number
okay
there you are going to link communication expense everywhere irrespective of the account name as per your operating you are going to connect communication charges so when you pull the communication charges system will automatically pull the data from that particular chart of account that particular G L account that is how it gets connected
okay can we see in the next session
this you can understand only when you have the posting only when you have the G L posting only when you see the G L report that is where you will be able to understand group chart of account alternative chart of account because you cannot directly record any entry to group account number alternative account number these are derived based on the operating account number
okay
okay those are used only for the reports that to your P N L balance sheet financial statement purpose only we will be using group and alternative
okay and what is the difference between alternative operating chart of account and country Pacific chart of account
alternative country specific is one and the same this is just the another name of it it's one and the same some call it as alternative some call it as country but one and the same both the names are same
but operating and country specific are different
yeah they are different operating is for your common across all the legal entities of your company code same operating will be used accounting standards are same rate wherever you use
okay
and when you are changing from country to country if you are using in India and if you are using in China and all different other countries according to that country there may be separate reporting requirements when you have a different reporting requirement in that particular country which is different than your operating chart of account to meet that country specific reporting requirement you are going to create a country specific chart of account only in your country if there is a different reporting requirement country or alternative is used otherwise we don't use it
okay okay thanks
yeah Samir
yes sir if we have A B C three company codes in India and we are assigning the three company codes to same operating chart of account if I want to see the consolidation report of a company how we how we can gonna say see the consolidation report
you can look at at the chart of account level because when you look at your financial statement you are not going to represent company code anywhere
sir I am just telling if we have A B C three companies in India and having only single operating chart of account how I gonna see a company is consolidation report company B's consolidation report and company C's consolidation consolidation reports individually
if you are talking about individually you will have to remove the term called consolidation we bring the consolidation only when you bring more than one legal entity A and B is consolidated A B C is consolidated B C is consolidated when you talk only A so consolidated term will not be there
okay sir suppose if we have if we want to see recording
A B C is individually you mean to say
yes
there is nothing is required that is a straightforward
okay and another
so straightforward you just need to put company code data will come so you have to see in a different way if you wanted to club two company codes if your requirement is only to look at one company code require one company code report in your requirement nothing is required straight away you go to report pass your company code you get the data directly
and another thing if we are everywhere we are just assigning the chart of account or company code to company code means everything we are just creating now we are just assigning that to company code so why we need to why we need company
company is not required as we discussed in the last session company is completely optional that is only used to determine your affiliated or non-affiliated status during your intercompany transactions otherwise there is no point if you don't create company also nothing is going to happen
thank you
okay yeah if if you are getting confused between the company and the company code so for time being the park company aside don't think about company just keep it aside so when I talk about the intercompany transaction once we come to a stage where you can post the entries generate the reports that time when I I will explain company again there you have a clear understanding
okay thank you
okay yeah Shanti
hi Ajay I have one more doubt on regarding this see if you are assigning same chart of account for three company codes a chart of account is a set of G L accounts right and so for example for my India company I need ten G L accounts for my U S company I need fifteen G L accounts and so if same chart of accounts is assigned to both I don't know how it is how both requirements are satisfied ten and fifteen
here what will happen whenever you create any G L account every G L account will have two segments chart of account segment and company code segment so what you will do for example we both are sharing the same chart of account your requirement is ten accounts my requirement is fifteen account okay now your ten my fifteen if I consolidate it if you put together if I remove the duplicates overall it may be only twelve
fifteen right ten and fifteen I need fifteen you need ten
hmm so the unique number overall it is fifteen now out of fifteen only I am taking ten and you are taking total fifteen agree
yes
so what we will do we will create the fifteen accounts the maximum number we will create which will cover all the accounts so when I create the fifteen in the chart of account I will give these are the chart of account list to you and the same list will be given to me out of those fifteen I will tell I need this ten and out of fifteen you will tell I need all the fifteen then you are going to extend the G L account from chart of account to company code okay at company code level you will not be creating the G L account you will be extending the G L account
okay
you will create the G L at chart of account you will extend the G L at company code
okay so the company code data for you will be blank for those G Ls right you still have the G Ls but the company code data will be blank
yes I cannot see that G L in my company code unless it is extended it will not be visible for my company code
at chart of account level also you can't see them
no
okay
because I can see only if it is extended through my company code else I cannot see
okay and so see I have one doubt here so if you are not at all able to see how you are going to how you know that there those G Ls are there and you want to extend them in case in future you want to extend to those five
those the G L extension G L creation is not part of the user it is part of a separated team called master data okay there is a different user there is a different team who will be creating extending the G L account any G L creation any G L extension will have to have the approval from the corporate finance team corporate accounting team so they are the team who will be deciding whether a G L account is to be created or if there is any existing G L account to be used for this particular purpose
okay so in future if you want those five G Ls to be extended you have to go through certain process approvals and then you then those will appear for you and you can extend them that's what you mean Ajay
yes correct
okay thank you
yeah who else Venkates
hello Ajay am I audible
yes yes go ahead
yes Ajay why we are assigning only one chart of account to different company codes my understanding is to avoid the creating process creation of G L account process again and again is that right
no 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 not for that purpose when we are talking about one company end of the day you need to see the consolidated reports
yes
if you have three company codes and you are the owner of three company codes at the end of a month if I say that company code number one two hundred loss company code number two five hundred profit company code number three one fifty profit do you know what is your overall profit now if I tell three separate numbers
no can I mean we need to calculate
you need to calculate now you are not the person who will sit individually work on the respective company code profit and all right for that you would have appointed one finance manager one finance person to take care of each company code financials
yes
now when the reports are coming to you you need a consolidated data meaning you are only interested whether I got overall profit or loss is that right for particular February month whether I am getting profit or loss you tell me that don't tell me number don't ask me to calculate profit minus loss is equal to net profit now to do this requirement to meet this requirement you need to depend on consolidation consolidation is easier consolidation is possible only when you can club the data from multiple company codes
yes
you can pull the data from multiple company codes only when you have same chart of account if you are using different different chart of account your consolidation your combining of G L account data will be complicated that is why only for the consolidation purpose you will be using it because whenever you start your S A P configuration before that there is something called organization structure
yes
at the organization structure level we will be deciding this which we will be talking once we complete all this configuration because once this is set up O P O is completed once we post the entries that is where we will start our regular configuration in which you will understand all these points conceptually because every point will have a connecting point now right why this if I am talking about this there are different points raising in your mind
yes yes Ajay
so all these points will be automatically clarified once we take this O P O company code to a posting level then when I start our actual batch five company code you will practically relate each and every topic that we are discussing meaning when I say here you need to assign one here you need to put two you will practically relate to me you will practically understand why we are configuring like this when I say company code level setup when I say client level config when I say country level config you will be able to relate it what I am meaning by that okay
okay
so until we complete our O P O configuration until we reach to the financials until we pull out the reports for O P O sudden confusions sudden clarifications will keep popping up don't worry about it because we are not completing this this is only to give you an idea Yeah, go ahead.
And one more doubt Ajay, we are assigning company chart of accounts to company codes and the company codes to company. Why can't we expect in the same screen while creating the chart of accounts, why can't we expect the company code in the same screen? Is that possible?
This is, no, because this is client level setting, that's what I mean to say. Whenever you do configuration, there are three levels, client level configuration, company code level configuration, country level configuration. These are standard in S A P, depending on this setting, you have to understand whether this is client level setting. Company code level setting or country level setting, which you will be able to understand once we complete O P O setup. That's where, before I start our regular configuration, I will make you understand everything practically.
Okay, yes. Thank you.
Okay, so that what will happen, when we proceed further, I would have completed setup, I will start posting the G L account. By the time I complete G L, you will start, you know, getting lot of questions, at that time, you may not feel comfortable to ask. The, you know, the long back, one month back question, agree?
Yes, yes.
And I may not be able to answer also, I may say that you referred the recording, oh no, this is already completed, which I don't want to say. When I know that this is what is going to happen for everybody, so it's not correct, I straight away start, I straight away complete the config. We need to have a different level of understanding to avoid confusions going forward. And this initial confusions will take a little time for anybody to overcome, so we have to have. At least a week to ten days time from now on, to eliminate all the confusions, whatever you are all getting, it takes approximately ten days. So in ten days, all these confusions will be gone, everybody will be strong enough on the basics, you don't get any confusion, nobody can create confusion to you. Okay?
Okay.
Alright, fine then, so we will connect tomorrow at the same time. So make sure whoever has created the email ID, please share it with me separately. And then I will complete this assignment of the IDs and all tomorrow. So that from Saturday onwards, you can straight away watch the recordings on the YouTube directly. Okay, good night.